I'd like to call the order, the Planning Commission Citizen Advisory Committee, City of Lowell, for our regular meeting on Monday, October nine, two thousand twenty-three, at seven p.m. Please rise from the place of leisure.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Shroppa is absent, and Chair Barker.
Here. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
In a second?
Support.
Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If you stand and excuse. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I have a second.
Discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Uh, do I have a motion for approval of minutes of our previous meeting, September the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, our regular meeting?
I'll make a motion.
And second?
I'll support.
And discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Uh, are there any public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda? This would be something not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will go to our, um, old business, A, site plan, site plan review for eight oh five and eight twenty-five East Main and eight, or one one-two ratio. Uh, could we have the applicant come up and explain the, uh, situation and new changes?
Please.
Again, all speakers, please name an address. Thank you.
Uh, Greg Tanner with Copper Rock Construction, six four six seven Fuel View Drive. Uh, thank you again for an opportunity to, uh, present to you, uh, our latest revised plan for the three parcels that, uh, we've been discussing with you over the last several months. I don't want to cover in a redundant way everything that I know is already in your packet, but I think there are some really substantial changes that have been made to the site plan since we met with you a month ago, and I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview on our logic and the steps that we've taken, just for the benefit of the audience and others who may not have had access to the entire package. Um, as you know, from the last two meetings that we had with you folks, uh, we've been looking at this transitional assemblage site at the east end of town as a transition, uh, between the downtown and, uh, the east side of the community. And obviously, it's zoned, uh, MU, mixed use, and we've been working to try to develop what we think is the most responsible project within that zoning jurisdiction that meets all the ordinances and the master plan requirements for that particular zoning. While we believe, uh, that the last two submissions that we sent in, uh, based on staff review, met all of those, uh, requirements, um, we have taken your advice and your comments and the comments we've received from the public, um, and earnestly trying to incorporate as much as we can into our plan so that it is a project that not only we can be proud of, but the Lowell community can be proud of. And happy to report that since we met a few months ago, we've made not fewer than, uh, ten or eleven changes to the site plan, which we think all benefit the project and the community in various ways. Uh, the most meaningful change, we think, is the fact that we've reduced the unit count by le- over eleven percent from what is permitted under, uh, the parking requirements and the other requirements that we had. So we've reduced the unit count from forty-four units to thirty-nine units, which again is a very meaningful sacrifice from our perspective in terms of the revenue potential for this project. And that adjustment has helped trigger multiple other things that were addressed in the various public forums that we wanted to try to achieve. Things such as, we've been able to increase our side yard setback on the west by fifty percent over what it was before. We've been able to increase our front yard setback by thirty-three percent over what it was before. We've been able to substantially increase the green space on this site. Uh, some of the things, uh, that we had before, like the number of islands in the parking lot, exceed the minimum requirements, uh, in the zoning ordinance. We've been able to combine the parking lot into a single parking lot, which improved not only the access, but the safety and, uh, our snow plowing abilities and our ability to keep snow plowing, uh, snow plow, uh, the spoils on site. Uh, we've been able to widen the main entranceway on Avery. And we've also been able to, um, maintain the two curb cuts and the distancing that's been recommended to us as preferable, uh, on Avery. Again, I don't want to overspeak for Andy or any of the staff, but I know Andy had an opportunity to talk with MDOT, were able to determine that a Grove Street curb cut just wasn't something that they thought was a good id- idea from a safety perspective. And at least tacitly, they endorsed the fact that having fewer curb cuts on, uh, Main Street was a good idea, which is something we've always thought, and our professional engineers have encouraged us to continue to have. The site is also, the building is shorter in length, uh, on the east side, we've gone from a three-story structure to a two-story structure, so that eases the bulk of the project. And again, those, these were all things that were, uh, involved in our previous site plans, which we believed and were told met the, uh, previous ordinance requirements. But we feel that we've substantially improved the safety and the access and verified in the last month all of those things that were questioned relative to our previous submittals. And then, very importantly, one of the things we're very glad to see is that the city, of its own volition, secured a third-party architectural and engineering review of our site plan through Progressive AE. They sent a letter in, which we received earlier today, which endorses the fact that there are no major problems with our site plan, and they were reviewing the forty-four unit design. So we've improved upon that by reducing the unit count and making it even that much more excellently, um, a better project. Uh, we're excited to move forward on this project, and, um, we feel that, uh, this site plan is probably the best that we can produce, given all of the iterations we've looked at. Uh, we know staff has recommended approval of this. We now have this third-party letter from Progressive, which again is something that we commissioned. We've got verification from MDOT. Uh, we know that the use that we have is the highest and best use. And there are some other little nuances that have happened over the last thirty days, such as we've received a second letter of intent for the commercial space for another user, which would be a traditional office space user, that if we choose to move forward to that user versus a restaurant, the parking requirements will even be less than what it would be for a restaurant. And then, one of the other things that we changed on the site plan, which we think is something that's been repetitive, uh, we've been hearing about the parking situation. By combining that parking lot into a single lot versus the two, and reducing the unit count, we have more than enough parking on site to fulfill all of the parking requirements for those units, plus adequate parking for the commercial space in terms of an overflow based on, you know, the street parking that everyone uses in all downtown businesses benefit from in the city of Lowell. So we're very comfortable with this site plan. Uh, we appreciate all the input that we've received. We've been working in good faith for the better part of the year on the site, and we're very, uh, proud of the design. You know, we have our friends here from Dixon Architecture and Rosine Engineering who can a- answer any detailed questions you may have regarding the engineering or the design on this. But, um, uh, again, we feel that this, the site plan has come a long way, and that it's a project that we're eager to get started on, and we would appreciate your endorsement tonight of this revised plan based on the accommodations and the compromises and even the sacrifices that we've made to try to make sure that we have a plan that fits well for the city. We understand it's impossible from a developer's perspective to please everyone all of the time, but we've been doing our level best to try to take all of these conversations and all of the input and incorporate that into a responsible plan that's professionally done, that is professionally executed on, that we professionally manage by a staff that has decades' experience operating these types of properties. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight this revised plan, and with respect to the, to the Planning Commission and to the community, we ask for approval conditioned upon vacating Horatio Street and the other conditions that were in Andy's report relative to the site plan. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions that are applicable to the site plan approval, which is what we're here for tonight, not other agenda items that would be handled in a different venue and at a different time. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to stay there for just one second, uh, commissioners, any questions before we open it up to the public? Anybody?
Appreciate your changes and your time spent working on our actions.
Thank you. Uh, again, we will, um, limit the time limit for speaking to three minutes. With the request that you, uh, when you come up and, and give us your thoughts on the site plan, uh, please try to, um, stay within that three-minute period. I would welcome anybody that wants to make a comment at this point. And again, please give us your name and address.
Shelby Phillips, seven two one East Main Street. Um, I appreciate the changes. However, it feels a bit inconsiderate to put the garbage directly next to another property when there are three other property lines that do not connect to another residence property. Uh, will surely be affected by the ungodly odors that will come from that garbage, especially in the summer, when most people want to enjoy their backyards. So we would ask that you please relocate that to any potential green space, any other potential parking changes that could be made to accommodate that. Also, you've made accommodations to lower the property to two stories on the east end of the property, which is not directly next to another person's home. Will you make the same changes on the west end of your property, or at the very least reverse the number of stories on each end of the building? There is a green space and then a road and then a house, but on the other end, it's our home. Uh, and then during the neighborhood meeting that Copper Rock had planned, um, it was asked that if there is a restaurant, um, and you guys have said that there was a pending agreement, I asked if they would serve alcohol and what the restaurant's hours would be. I was told by Greg Taylor that they did not know. However, last meeting, he said that there was a restaurant that they knew and had contracted with before, so if you've contracted with them before, I would assume that you would know those answers, at the very least, the alcohol answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please?
Bob Rowley, New Orleans, Maine. Guess to start off the three-minute thing, how much time has Copper Rock consumed of the city? And the tax-paying residents get three minutes when we're told five? And Chair Barker, you made the comment in the August meeting, it was important to get public comment in, but then in September, we got three minutes. People were cut off rudely, and they needed through all this stuff. I, I don't think your vote was valid without the public comment that should have been there. And there's not as many people here now. They're, they're giving up on the council to make a good decision. They think you're gonna just push this through. Parking's a lot better. But I counted ninety spaces. Can't really read the packet material when you zoom up on it, so it looks like there was some numbers that comes on there. But I counted ninety. There's four handicap, you can submit eight for tenants, thirty-eight spaces for whatever goes in that other restaurant business. Seems to be a mystery if I count. That hit the highlights? I did give you guys in writing all my thoughts, because I don't think I can, uh, base it on three minutes. I hope you went through it. Standard A, it discusses adjoining properties and the relationship of the size of the buildings. This building's nearly fifty thousand square feet. The homes around it are one to two, maybe less. I think Bob McWinnie, his house is probably less than a thousand square feet. This, this doesn't match. It shouldn't be built here. Section A shouldn't have been passed, and you should re-vote on it. My other big one is the master plan. So there's a lot of language through the master plan that discusses like-sized buildings with like-sized buildings. One of them talks about three-story buildings being a hundred and fifty feet away. Uh, another one talks about ten dwellings per acre.
Thirty seconds.
On a multifamily unit. This is way over that. Even at the reduced thirty-nine, they're twenty-seven per acre, and they've got some mystery business going in there that's gonna consume part of that. It's, it's overkill. The master plan is set up to safeguard the citizens, and we should be reviewing it more thoroughly and not just voting through.
Thank you. At this point, too, I'd like to acknowledge that, uh, Bob and Pam Rowley did send us a three or four-page, uh, piece to all of the commissioners, uh, and Andy and, and probably the city officials, too, and I'd like to acknowledge that, that we did get it, and I'm presuming, and I know my commissioners well, we all looked at it and have, have looked at all of the information that we've received. Uh, we also received, uh, from Mary Eileen, uh, several, several, uh, emails that also have been read and, uh, put through all of the commissioners, and we spent a lot of time on this. It's not, we have not rushed this. So, anyway, I'd like to thank you and, and, uh, your wife, Pam. Thank you.
Well, um, Donald Ponzi, seven one seven East Main Street. Like you said before, my mom sent you a letter, oh, you guys all letters, so what mostly I want to say is she, she said it better in there. But I want to reiterate, um, that, you know, the master plan does not, um, match, um, section F of your guys' approval process. It doesn't really fit with the, um, neighborhood or what the intent of the neighborhood is, you know, with the master plan. I would also, um, like to still say, you know, despite, you know, removing five minutes, that it's thirty-nine, um, units with assuming two to three cars per unit is still a lot of cars within such a small space. Um, I, I wish I'd knew it before I came up here, but, um, comparing it to like Kaiser Park, you want, which is one restaurant, is a huge parking lot. You know, would that parking lot, you know, really be able to fit all the residents? And then assuming they have friends and stuff over, it's still gonna lead to obsessive amount of street parking. Same with the car. I also question, they brought a archi- um, architect firm to give it the thumb up. Um, I heard they often work with Copper Rock, so I do think they're confident in shit there. But just getting over, I am confused by some stuff. They said, like, they said at peak morning, there'd be fourteen cars added to the traffic flow on Main Street. That seems, you know, just not correct. You know, if they're thirty-nine units, fourteen cars added, are they assuming most of the people living in these units do not have jobs in the morning, where they're gonna be getting their cars and driving off? You know, that just seems questionable. You know, it would seem more plausible that there'd be like forty cars added, or at least twenty, you know? Twenty of the thirty-nine unit will have morning jobs, you know? I doubt everyone there would have second shifts, you know, not even wake up in the morning. Um, I think still then, the master plan did way too bad in the vacate ratio, which none of the residents want, you know? And a master plan that not va- vacating a road, no one want, city council doesn't want, the resident don't want. Seem like it shouldn't be approved based on that almost everyone in Lowell don't want it. This plan will, um, lead to a big lifestyle change for Lowell, you know, having such a big apartment complex added, you know? It's gonna affect us all and our shit to the neighbor, you know? Think of how many more people will be in Lowell, you know, contributing to our already backed-up Main Street. And, you know, all the, you know, crowded areas and stuff.
Thirty seconds.
Um, and I'd like to add, finally, you know, frustrating last month, you guys, felt like we all came up here and said stuff, and you guys just didn't listen or discuss anything we discussed, you know? You guys seemed very forward. It'd be nice if you guys would like to explain why you think what we're bringing up is unfounded and we believe it should be overlooked in the plan to go forward, you know? Because I think none of you guys want to live by this, and we don't either. Thank you.
John Sterling, seven eleven Avery Street. I'm the three-minute guy. Um, my, my issue is traffic flow, and with traffic flow, I would like to see this end of town be like what downtown Lowell is, where you use the left lane for, uh, or the center lane for left-hand turns, and make the, uh, parking on the south side of Main Street not existing. I would like to, to see the development, uh, to enter the development off Main Street. I would like to see them exit the development on Avery Street. I would like to, uh, know the status of Horatio Street. I was under the understanding that, that, uh, MDOT was gonna look into this, and I can't find anything in the paperwork, and, you know, that's twenty-seven pages to download, and I started and kind of got tired of reading. And I went around that property, and I noticed that there are eight curb cuts in those three properties. And I have pictures of those, I counted those, so I want to know what's happening to all those curb cuts that already exist. Why not use Horatio as a way to get in? Take your traffic and move it inside the development, and then make it go out onto Avery Street. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mike DeVore, four twenty-four, Elm Street. You are going to speak on the master plan. Master plans are developed as tools for placemaking. This is very much a project that's putting profit over placemaking. And for all the responsible project in Good Neighbor Talk, very little that has come out of this plan hits either one of those benchmarks for me. So that's all. Just wanted to give it a second thought. Thanks.
Camerole, eight oh four East Main. Start out with the September eleventh meeting. I do remember Mr. Moore telling the committee members, you know, don't worry about how you go, because you're gonna make people unhappy. And that is the tip of the iceberg with us. I mean, we are not only unhappy, but we're frustrated, disappointment, disappointed, and really actually terrified that this is gonna happen. Talking about the review of standard A, uh, the welfare of the people, um, nobody's been talking about the fact that there's no onsite management in this big huge thing parked in the middle of our neighborhood. I interviewed both the manager, management from Pebble Beach Apartments, as well as Stone Ridge Apartments in Lowell Township. Stone Ridge has, uh, business hour management, and Pebble Beach has onsite management. And when I talked to the manager of Pebble Beach, she was like a cloud, that they were just gonna put it there and leave. And then, how does that make us feel? Because we're surrounding this craziness with no ability to really communicate effectively with what's going on. The other thing, as far as the welfare goes, I mean, how much is it looking out for our welfare when they're trying to take our street away from us, and we've had to pay thousands of dollars to hold on to it? And Mr. Taylor said at the last meeting, well, we aren't in a business of taking streets away, but that's what you're doing. And, you know, but how does that affect our welfare? You know, uh, and then standard C, of course, the safety of pedestrians, the public and private citizens regarding to the traffic, uh, on the streets affected. Take away all the parking spots on the south side of Main, East Main. If they have onsite parking, why do we have to have them? It's not safe. I can't turn left if Kaiser's is using their easterly most parking spot. And he had to do it safely, I have to go right. So I had suggested that city council and the Lowell Police Department, uh, to come out, let's do staged, um, parking scenarios and really see what's going on.
Thirty seconds, Pam.
Okay. So that brings us to this. Why don't we do, as, um, our friends suggested, that we do a public, uh, exchange with the members and the city council and the planning commission? Or let's, as a group, come out to the property, look at our parking spots, and really see what's going on. And Avery is gonna get, that's gonna be a nightmare, because there's gonna be so much traffic.
Thank you, Pam.
It's a private neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, at this point, then, I would like to have Andy go over, uh, the information for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so did you see the updated, uh, site plan? I think Mr. Taylor did a nice job of giving the highlights in terms of what the changes were. The summary, I think, was accurate, they reduced Denver units in the project by, they reduced the height of the building on the east side from three stories to two. They increased the setback on the west side from fifteen to twenty, uh, feet, so they increased that by five feet. With respect to parking, so there, there's a couple of things, um, so there are, um, let's see, there's many of these spaces onsite presently, with thirty-nine units per the zoning ordinance requirement, that seventy-eight that are required on the property. While I recognize there are four handicap spaces on there, those are included in that parking calculation, we don't back those out, because, you know, handicap, we're not the people, you know, handicap people would still be potentially living in the building or visiting the office or restaurant or whatever that, that goes there, so we do include those in the calculation. We noticed that the, uh, the parking lots have been sort of connected there, which I think will help, uh, hopefully to, uh, improve circulation on, on the site as well. I don't have too many additional comments with respect to landscaping. Um, you know, on the west side there, they had mentioned that they're going to build a statutory fence, you know, I think I know what that means, but I think would be helpful, um, if this is approved, to find out exactly what they're thinking about there in terms of materials. Uh, the signage is unchanged, it's just a proposed location for a sign, assuming that's going to be a ground sign, I prefer it to be a ground sign, um, if they want to have have one there at all. And again, that is something that is governed by the zoning ordinance and would be dealt with sort of after the fact if it's approved by the planning commission. So I think the summary there provided by the applicant is, is, is pretty good, I think it, it means everything. Otherwise, I think all of this, all the comments that I had from the last meeting, you know, remain, you know, we acknowledge that they're proposing to vacate the street. And that's kind of a separate process here that's, I don't think has yet been resolved, assuming that goes through, that would facilitate this, this project and enable it to move forward, the planning commission is to decide if we move in that direction. Uh, they also, uh, added sidewalk along Grove and Avery. Couple comments quickly on traffic. So we did talk to both MDOT and the touch of engineer at our office about, um, about kind of traffic circulation and how, how all that would look. So there were two things that were discussed at the last planning commission meeting. One of them was a driveway on Grove Street on the far east end, end of the property. Both MDOT, and MDOT does not have jurisdiction, but the person that I talked to there is an engineer. Um, and then the city engineer both thought that was not a great idea, just because there's too many potential conflicts with, you know, cars that might be looking to turn and various turning movements with the intersections to the north and the south being very close. Neither of them thought that was a particularly good idea. MDOT did not give me a firm answer, or, uh, in terms of the, you know, what they thought about an access onto Main Street, other than to say, well, we'd have to, you know, model it and study and look at it further, and they gave me kind of a non-answer. I, and the city engineer remained of the opinion that they would likely be not overly excited about a driveway onto Main Street. Again, typically, they look to reduce the amount of conflict points they have with, with adjacent streets, and we've seen that over and over again with site plans that we've done on Main Street throughout town. Typically, we're looking at this on the west side of town, it's when we looked at, um, a bunch of the commercial businesses over there. of the commercial businesses over there, um, whether they were some of the adult use of our facilities or some of the restaurants or some of the other businesses. Um, I think this came into play when Lake Michigan Craig community went in there. They're often looking to, if you have two curb cuts, let's take it one. Um, if you have one, but you have one on the side street, let's get rid, get rid of the one on the main street and use the one on the side street. So they're often, in my experience, looking to eliminate curb cuts onto Main Street. Um, and so I, if I, again, I, I maintain my opinion that they would probably want to do the same thing here. Um, the, uh, the engineer that was retained from Progressive provided a report with respect to traffic flow and volume and things like that, I think that stands for itself, um, that person I think is, is, you know, licensed and, you know, competent and able to, to do that kind of work and, and model those kinds of things, that's something, that's something that we really do at our office, which is why uh they were asked to do it at Progressive instead of at Williamsworth. Um, other than that, I don't have any further comments, so, you know, we felt like the previous plan um met the standard in, in, in terms of parking. One of the questions that came up at the last meeting a few different times was when people who live in the residential units are gonna be parking on the street overnight, that's gonna be a problem during the winter when there's no parking overnight. Uh, with this newest plan, they're able to accommodate all of the required parking in the off-street parking lots behind the building. Um, of course, somebody could, I suppose, leave their car on the street overnight in the winter and have a problem, but they could do that all over the place in the city and they probably do every once in a while, I would guess. So they're able to accommodate what they need to accommodate off-site and then some. Um, on top of that, you do have seventeen parking spaces on the street on the north side of Main, they could have another six on the south side of Main and then they can also count additional publics on the street or off-street parking within four hundred feet of the site. So when you add all that together, like we've done previously, they do have enough parking to accommodate the residential units. Um, and the restaurant, if it's an office, the office parking calculation is, um, requires less spaces than the restaurant ones, so that would be, I think, helpful for that project if they didn't do an office use instead of a, a restaurant type of use, but, um, again, we're not really focused on the type of use in this instance, both of those uses are permitted by right in your, um, in your mixed-use district. So, um, I guess, are there any questions, Mr. Chairman, or how do you want to proceed?
Um, questions from the commissioners first of Andy and/or the applicant. I've heard several times here about the onsite management, I, I guess, Mr. Taylor, could you give us some insight into that?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Um, property management obviously is a business that requires close relationships with the tenants, frequent conversations, uh, because you have tenants that are turning over, new tenants, old tenants that are renewing, those types of things. From a practical perspective, as I referenced earlier, um, the staff would be involved with this, have decades of experience working through both normal conditions, COVID conditions, post-COVID conditions, and as you can imagine, um, we have a staff that is routinely contacted both within normal office hours and outside of normal office hours without belaboring a long answer to your questions, Mr. Chair, as I mentioned at the last meeting. There are operational structures in place on all the properties that were involved with, that are, you know, inclusive of parking permits, which are policed, not only by the staff managing the properties, but also posted that any violators will be towed, those in practical, practical perspective, the tenants actually help us police that because they don't want abuse of that, so they'll notify us and we will have a contract to have people towed at their expense if they're violating that. Same is true for maintenance calls, for snowplow people, uh, all of the other operational things. Ninety-five percent of that can all be done remotely, documentation can be signed remotely. Uh, onsite management offices are a requirement typically of a project of over a hundred units and, uh, there are of course exceptions, but this being a thirty-nine unit project, in our professional opinion, given our experience, does not require onsite management. We obviously have standard office hours at Copper Rock and twenty-four hour maintenance and emergency number for all of our properties, so there is no time when a resident can't reach out and get some type of response. Um, and again, operationally, we've got quiet hours and other things like that for the convenience of our customers and for the convenience of the neighborhood. While we can't think of everything, we have experienced a lot and that would be applied in this scenario. So in our professional opinion, having an onsite presence on a daily basis is, is really overkill for a project of this size. We can handle, um, handle most everything that we need to, being twenty or twenty-five minutes away, uh, through our normal business practices.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I have a question about, is this the, for security, about the parking lot, is there any kind of lighting that's going in, in the parking lots that we would have to be concerned with?
Yeah, Greg. Yeah, yeah, our, the parking lot would have standard, you know, downward directional parking lots on, parking lot lights on full, there'd be magic pack lights mounted on the side walls to give, you know, the sidewalks the lighting that they would typically have. So all of those details are, are already built into the ordinance and we would be building to those standards.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I'm dealing with Copper Rock Construction, I just wanted to follow up real quickly, there's been great COVID and great detail, but, um, it's important to know that this would be a local group, um, you know, Matthew and his family live in Lowell, we have other people that were in Lowell a lot, you know, someone had mentioned our architect is, you know, biased, well, a long time ago, it came this meeting, many meetings ago, and one of the things was, we really like how Ada looks, we really look up, I think it's important, we, we got the architect that's responsible for Ada, so we're not, you know, in bed with the architect, even though he does a great job, is my point, I just wanted to touch on that point. But I think what's important as far as the building, it would be locally owned and it's an investment for the Copper Rock people here. So it's not some other state big conglomerate that's gonna own this building, it'll be local people that are investing in Lowell, so I think that's important to, to count on.
Mr. President? Um, Greg, one, one more question on, on the, uh, let's see, it would be on the south side of Main Street, uh, you moved it back a couple feet or four or so. Uh, will there be increased, uh, foliage there? I, did, did that change at all, I guess is the question.
I haven't done a shrub count, I know we're adding seventeen trees at the site, moving some trees obviously, twenty-some odd of the shrubs. I'm not sure that, I know there's additional green space there, if you recall, we cannot set the building back further than ten feet.
Correct.
Because that's a requirement, so we've split the difference between where it was before and this, this new, uh, setback, and again, that's ten feet from the sidewalk, not ten feet from the curb, so there's that additional green space there, which is in the right of way, which we can't plan to prevent anything in. So yes, there would be some additional buffering in terms of the distance, I can't tell you per se maybe calls in whether or not there's additional shrubbery that's been placed.
Because right now, I think it's, it's one tree, large tree and three bushes, if I'm not mistaken, or kind of section one.
Bruce, could you go those?
Yeah, I know, I couldn't read it, that's why I'm asking a question.
Okay.
Paul Henderson of Throzie and Associates, yes, uh, we provided a detail on, you know, it's not a final, if you may, that'll be part of our, you know, if you choose to approve this, our building permit package, but yeah, there's an enhanced, um, buffer as well as planting in that area, in the building and sidewalks.
Well, that was my question, when you moved it back further, if you're gonna put more bushes or more trees in there or, and what's the size of the tree that you're planting?
Two and a half feet.
Obviously, it would, it would shield the, uh, houses on the south side of the Main Street.
Two and a half feet, uh, doesn't allow for, you know, a lot of extra landscaping, but it does, you know, increase the buffer. Um, the, the trees would all be smaller because it's a smaller, you know, they'd be smaller trees.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Mike, does the city have any questions? I, I, I'm, I'm gonna reiterate my, my thought pattern here again, that surrounding streets uh with a main going down Avery Street and having Division Avery and Jackson redone in the near future, is that, is that correct?
So if this is approved, Division and Avery would immediately go into engineering to pay next year, uh, Jackson is a twenty-five, twenty-six project.
Okay. And, um, I know it's not part of this discussion tonight, but I'm gonna raise the question anyway, is there a way that we could look in the future, look at having a stoplight at Jackson or even better, as far as I'm concerned, a roundabout or a roundabout even back at Grove Street? I know, I know, I know you may not like them, but I, I know they work and that's, that's my question, could we look at that, can we look at traffic counts prior and then a year after, if, if this goes through, a year after, what the traffic count is like on those corners?
Sure. Obviously, those are decisions by MDOT, I don't have control over that.
On Avery and?
Oh, you mean, you wanna roundabout on Avery?
No, 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 roundabout on, on Main Street, I understand that. I, I'm saying a traffic count now or if, if this goes through and then also about a year after the completion, if it, if it fails.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
So that we know if there's so much increased traffic going down Jackson Street.
Sure.
That we do need, or, you know, whatever.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we can do that, that's not an issue, yeah, that's, we can, we can coordinate that with Williamsworth very easily.
Because otherwise, we, we run into that problem where it's backing up Jackson Street or Grove Street and/or Avery Street for that matter.
Yeah.
If we don't know ahead of time what we're dealing with.
Sure.
It, it, it just becomes a guess.
Sure, we can, we can coordinate that with Williamsworth.
And same with the roundabout, if we can, if, if, actually, I would prefer it going in the town, you know, at our city limits even, anything that would slow down that traffic as it comes into town would help because you have that curb and as soon as you come around that curb, you run into problems.
Yeah, I don't know where you could put, I mean, the only place I could think of where if you wouldn't have a roundabout coming in would be a hot call.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's obviously up to the, MDOT, but yeah, you know, we can always, just asking the question. We can always advocate for it.
Right, okay. All right, any other questions, commissioners? Sorry to take up your time.
I got a question, in the, in the updates, they talked about snow storage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd just like to see if anyone can point out where the storage would be on there.
Well, as you can see, uh, obviously there's sidewalks on three sides of this property, uh, the new ones we're putting along Avery and along Grove and then the existing one along Main Street, which will likely be, you know, likely be new concrete, uh, given some of the condition in that area. Uh, you can also see on the southern side of the now connected parking lot, uh, that there is a sidewalk there and you can also see that there's a rolled curb that allows for push-offs. At the east end of the property, behind the signage, there's a substantial landscaped area there. There's also an area north of the parking lot where you can see that we have, you know, a little curb in where you can push there and then we also have the ability to blow snow from the sidewalks into the landscaped area south of the parking lot. And then there's a small area where we could also pile a little bit of snow on the southwest corner, uh, behind the commercial space, if you can, you can see that. We're gonna have a push-off area and then similarly a small area on the northwest corner. So, uh, even though it's a small triangular site, uh, we think that there's adequate uh, snow storage and obviously it's our responsibility if we have a heavy snow event, if it can't be maintained onsite, we have to truck it off, wouldn't be the responsibility of the city, uh, obviously that would be our expense.
I guess, I, I mean, just my questioning is the, the, when vehicles are parked there, because snow's down primarily third shift, so if vehicles are blocking where the snow storage is, I mean, seems like it'd be an issue, because snow, snow's gonna be stuck some places and cars are gonna get blocked, I guess.
Well, you know, again, we'd have to manage around that, typically the snowfall is pushed in the morning after the peak hours, excuse me, or before the peak hours, depending on when the snowfall occurs, you know, we don't push unless it's at least two inches or more. Um, you know, and you can't, can't plan for every possibility, but, but, uh, based on where the carports are located, you can see that those are areas we wouldn't be pushing off, um, or would be pushing off in the other areas.
Okay.
And again, I, I'm sorry I didn't calculate the exact net increase in the greenscape, but because of the reduction of the footprint of the building and size of the units, obviously, um, we've reduced the amount of asphalt and concrete on the site, so we picked up green areas that we didn't have before.
Any other questions?
One more question, is there any chance of moving the dumpsters down that side on the southeast corner? That'd be more away from houses.
Uh, we'll, we'll certainly look at that, uh, you know, again, we were trying to make sure that we had all our parking ratios met or exceeded, so, uh, we'd like the fact that it's possible. Yeah, I mean, that'll be up against a stockade fence, um, where it's located now would be probably the optimal spot for trash removal, but we could certainly investigate the relocation, but really no other spot to put it, um, other than what you're suggesting, but that would likely impact four to six parking spaces.
Just a couple of things on the dumpster enclosure, that was like a, we'll make sure it's moved, if that's, I just want you to have peace of mind on that, if we have to move, we can, we'll make that happen. I think one point I do want to touch, based on the parking, especially depending on what type of user we end up putting in there, one of the users that we may end up putting in would have more of a daytime type of business, so their parking count would be higher during the day and then less at night when more, you know, people who live there, so, so that's something Greg and the team are studying. Also, I think it's important, is our parking per unit is higher in this project than about any other project we've done in other municipalities, so at the end of the day, we have to produce a product that people want to live in and I think that's an important, you know, all these are very good points that people bring up, but if we can't remove snow, if we don't have a successful project that people want to be in, we're at risk. So we're, we want a very successful, professionally run, nice-looking, good operation here, so I think that is important on this type of stuff.
What else?
I got a question from Mike.
Yes.
About Avery, when you rejuvenate its utilities.
Sure.
Are you widening it as well? Because it is a pretty thin street and how much are you widening by?
Correct, we did ask the engineer if we could add one and a half foot to the street and preliminarily the answer was yes. Obviously, it still needs more investigation and review, but in talking with our engineers, their initial thought looking at the property lines.